It's twelve oh eight and we're calling the meeting to order right now. Um, any announcements?
No, not today.
Not today? Okay. And are there any public comments that I need to be aware of today?
Anybody registered?
The registration.
Okay, great. Alright, if that's the case, we will move right on to our regular agenda items. Um, that the board individually will consider and take action on any or all of the following items. The first one is approval of the minutes from regular board meeting held on September twenty five, two thousand twenty five.
Motion approved.
Say it.
Okay, been moved in second. All in favor say aye. Ayes have it, that passes. The next is to consider a resolution ratifying insurance renewals for liability and property coverage for Fort Worth Housing Solutions and Fort Worth Housing Solutions affiliated entities and properties.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Uh, so for a little background, Fort Worth Housing Solutions has historically obtained their insurance through the Texas Municipal Risk Pool, or TML, for general liability, workers' compensation, and cyber risk coverage, as well as property coverage for our administrative buildings, um, and Butler Place and our scattered sites. In June of two thousand twenty five, TML notified Fort Worth Housing Solutions that it had made the decision not to provide insurance coverage of any kind for housing authorities that participate in public-private ownership of housing projects. Uh, the decision applied to all coverage, not just those blended owner projects, uh, which created the need for us to seek repositioning of our entire insurance portfolio. Uh, we had already moved a portion of its, of the property and liability portfolio to HAI last year, um, following previous issues with TML's coverage interpretation. And HAI also assisted us in the market sourcing of coverage. So, at FWHS, cost for the twenty-five, twenty-six renewal coverage is, um, th- there's a breakdown in your materials, but the total premiums are two million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-one. That includes, um, coverage for general liability and umbrella excess, uh, property including wind and hail, auto, director and officer, employment practices, fiduciary, cyber risk, workers' compensation, employer's liability, and crime. Appropriate cost of the property, wind and hail, and general liability premiums are charged to the properties as part of their operating expenses, as well as the umbrella excess required by specific property loans. Uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, two million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine of the two million, seven hundred and eleven, four sixty-one will be allocated to each of the designated properties and charged to the partnerships as a property expense for FWHS reimbursement. The cost of coverage for Fort Worth Housing Solutions-owned administrative buildings and agency-related coverage will be paid from the COCC budget. The cost of insurance for housing properties will be charged to those properties as a reimbursable expense. So, re- recommendation is it is recommended that the board ratify and authorize the president to enter into agreements with HII and its procured carriers to renew the real property, wind and hail, general liability, umbrella excess, auto, director and officer, employment practices, fiduciary, cyber risk, crime, employer's liability, and workers' compensation policies for Fort Worth Housing Solutions, its wholly-owned entities and properties, and third-party affiliated entities and properties for which it is responsible for providing insurance at a cost not to exceed the amounts I just explained totaling two million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-nine cents for the, uh, twenty-twenty-five, six, twenty-five, twenty-six insurance here. Any questions? It's a lot.
That was a lot. I understand it all though, so do we have questions on any other details?
No.
I read it in our details, so, um...
I move to approve.
Say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, that motion passes. Alright, thank you, ma'am. Let's see, we are next, too. Um, consider a resolution to adopt amended and and restated bylaws of the housing authority of the city of Fort Worth, city of Fort Worth?
Okay, so there are some changes that have prompted us to adopt an, um, amended and restated bylaws for the housing authority of the city of Fort Worth, Texas. Specifically, changes to the Open Meetings Act in the Texas Government Code, as well as some administrative changes to, at the agency, necessitate modifications. Um, those pro- pro- those proposed changes include, uh, updating the agency headquarters address, updating the officer terminology from secretary to secretary treasurer, which is what we use currently, updating the meeting schedules, because we've changed meeting times and, and those kind of things, um, updating Texas Government Code references, amending posting schedules, um, because as you know, we discussed months ago that that changed. We now, it's not seventy-two hours, it's not three full business days for the posting, um, and consolidating the organizational introduction information. Uh, per the existing bylaws, um, all board commissioners and officers were provided with this, um, notice of the proposed changes at least seven days prior to this meeting. Um, so it is recommended that the board adopt the attached amended and restated bylaws of the housing authority of the city of Fort Worth, Texas, effective November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Any question? Kind of just some cleanup there. Kind of just some cleanup.
Yeah.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next item, thank you for that.
Texter?
Yes.
Don't we normally record these meetings?
She's, Ashley's doing it.
Oh.
Stealth.
And yes, we do normally record them, yes. Okay. Um, our next item then is to consider a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-six HCDP payment standards. Hello?
Hello.
Good afternoon.
As you know, we, on a annual basis, receive new payment standards from HUD. Those are published in October. Um, typically, our agency makes those effective for January one. We are recommending that we approve the payment standards set by HUD at a hundred percent um, of the published amount. Typically, we have the ability to measure between ninety to a hundred and ten percent. Um, but based on the slight increase in utility allowance cost, um, and just to remain, um, equitable, um, my recommendation is that we approve based at a hundred percent, and those will contain within your package.
I, I looked at it, but I didn't pay attention to whether or not they had gone up or not. Have they reduced our standards or?
They have not. They've increased.
Okay, good.
And let me show you these, um, in line with what Tarrant County is doing as well.
These are in line.
So we try to stay very close to what Tarrant County does, just because we have landlords that accept both our voucher and Wayne's vouchers, and so we want to make sure that we're making it as easy for our landlords as possible.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Um, this may be you or someone else in your group, but how are we doing for HUD payments? Uh, money's received from HUD for our landlord?
Oh, we've had no interruptions in receiving HUD funding, and now that we have a, um, continuing resolution, we expect to, uh, you know, receive those funds till the end of January. Well, when we should either get another CR, a new budget, or there could be the possibility of a shutdown, so we feel like we can make it through the holidays, uh, you know, without any interruption.
Yeah, okay, okay, great. No more questions. Anybody else?
I move that we approve the resolution for the twenty-twenty-six HCDP payment standards.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you, yeah. Our next item on the agenda is to consider a resolution approving the revised operating budget for the central office cost center um, for the fiscal year ending December twenty thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
December.
What it is? Is that right? Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Should it be twenty-six? No, it's twenty-five.
That's next time.
Gotcha, okay, alright.
Good afternoon, you guys.
Good afternoon.
The purpose of the resolution is to request approval of the revised twenty-twenty-five operating budget for the central office cost center. With the original budgets, uh, the process is normally to get, uh, projections and assumptions based on previous years. Um, therefore, the revision of this is necessary to reflect the more actual, actual, um, financial condition of the agency. We are recommending an approval of the revised operating budget of nine million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, which represents the decrease of one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, nine, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the original budget. This adjustment reflects the updated financial position of the CLCC. Uh, with that said, um, we can discuss more detail if you guys have questions, because there was a breakdown in your packet. But the total of the income decrease of one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars overall is mainly due to a decrease of, uh, one million, two hundred, nine thousand, which is good, the income went down, but it's still good, because, uh, due to a, uh, break-even point. You know, normally, we send out, um, we need a break-even amount to for distribution from other properties. This break-even has gone down, uh, we have a less fund requirement than that. Um, the expenses also went down by one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, mainly due to various expenses. And, um, due to, mainly due to various expenses, uh, the salaries went down by eight hundred and sixteen thousand due to the reduction in workforce and the retirement. Uh, there was also a travel decrease of a hundred and five thousand due to the reduction of personnel. Uh, sundry expenses also went down by a hundred and eighty-six thousand, uh, which is due to professional services and strategic planning reallocation. There was also a decrease of a hundred and one thousand, which includes the HCB vendor, the, not HCB, HVAC vendor, um, that, and brown, browsing landscaping, savings, and reduction in protective services. There are no changes in the projected net income the CLCC has anticipated to break even. Therefore, we're asking the board to approve the requested resolution.
Wow, that's good stuff.
Yeah.
Efficient management, too, of our funds, right? So, that's good. Any other, any questions, guys?
Okay.
More detail?
Sounds, sounds good.
I don't detail, if y'all want to go into detail, we'll go line by line.
No, we, I understand. That's because you keep us posted all during the time that things are changing, so, you know, when you come up with a total change, then we, we get it, because we've been following along a whole time. So, good job in, um, our financial space. Thank you for that. Um, if no questions, do we have a motion?
Move.
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, that motion passes. So I guess you're with us for a minute?
Four minutes.
Okay. Consider a resolution approving the revised operating budget for the Housing Choice Voucher Mainstream and Special Programs for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. The following represents the, uh, revised budget for the twenty-twenty-five operating budget for assisted housing programs. This includes HCB mainstream, dash, EHB, My Rehab. We are requesting, um, approval of the revised operating budget totaling eighty-two million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, representing a decrease of six million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, um, from the original budget. The reduction is mainly due to a six-point-two million dollar decrease in HUD revenue, driven by stabilized market rents and no issuance of, of new vouchers. The corresponding HUD expenses, uh, decreased by equal amount, resulting in a no, uh, in, no net impact of HUD on the budget. Last year, PHA's nationwide anticipated significant shortfalls, including Fort Worth Housing Solutions, which projected a four million dollar shortfall and prepared a conservative budget. We are pleased to report that no COCC contribution is required, and financial performance has been significantly better than estimated. The revised Assistant Housing Program budgets include a total operating revenue of eight mil- eighty-two million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, a total expense of eighty million, eight hundred and six, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, and a projected surplus of one point, uh, four million dollars. Um, the total income decreased by seven point five, seven point fifty-five percent. This is mainly due to, uh, a decrease in HUD, HUD revenue of, due to leasing activities, reduction in leasing activities. There was also a decrease in admin fees earned for the same reason, and an increase of fourteen thousand dollars in other income, mainly due to a higher anticipated portable income. The summary of the expenses changes are, uh, as follow. There was a eight-point-foury-eight percent, uh, decrease driven by administrative expenses, uh, mainly due to, uh, five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of reduction in salaries, benefit savings, travel, training, equipment, professional service, and fees. There was a maintenance decrease, a slight maintenance decrease of, uh, primarily due to fuel usage, because of fewer drivers. Um, and then lastly, there was a decrease of six-point-nine million dollars of HUD due to a lower anticipated leasing in fewer households. The HCB program is gen- is projected to generate a surplus and will not require any transfer from the COCC. With this summary, we are asking the board to approve a request, the requested resolution.
You know, I, that, that all is great. I do wonder with, with the breakdown and the changes, are we serving, or are we able to serve all the people that need to be served, or? How is that looking in reference to, and that's probably not your question.
Actually, as rents continue to rise, we're able to serve less people on our program. So, our baseline authority is to be able to serve over six thousand people, about sixty-four hundred people. Um, we're only able to issue approaching five thousand vouchers. And so, there's just that delta between the budget that they give us and the rents. The rents for each of those vouchers is just too much, and so, um, we don't anticipate being able to add a ton of new people to the program, and we've had very low turnover rates. So, since the pandemic, the turn- it used to be, um, about forty-four vouchers a month would turnover, and we're at about a quarter of that a month, that turnover.
That's great, okay. But we have as many people poured in?
So...
We're not having as many people poured in, because we're currently billing.
So we build our home authority for this.
And so they're trying to deter, because everybody, yeah, everybody's watching their budget very closely.
Nationwide, most housing afford, authorities are either in shortfall or right on the bubble. And so, the fact that we're managing it, we're not in shortfall, we're using all of our money, um, and that it's not going to require any transfer from the COCC to cover anything, is really good, so...
And I'm used to that. In years past, we were always doing that.
Right.
So, um, that's great.
Hats off to Lysia for really efficiently managing the program.
Absolutely. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to interject that, and I want to thank you, too. I've learned all this new stuff that I didn't know. I have more detail than I know, so, yeah, this is good. I just noticed, guys, when we went to our national meetings...
Phoenix, yeah.
Yeah, then I learned a lot more detail about what we do and then, but always know that our finance department takes care of everything we have very efficiently and keeps us out of trouble, so that's really good.
And just to kind of give you, like, point of reference, our total HUD, um, historically, you know, a few years ago was not even sixty million dollars. And so, the fact that we're close to eighty million dollars just shows you that increase in rents, and it's happening nationwide. So HUD is really having to figure out how to balance that program, um, across all the different, you know, between public housing, Housing Choice Voucher programs, and the other special programs.
God, they changed the payment standard, so we'd be in luck.
No one can find housing.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, okay, sounds good. Thank you so much for that. Alright. See you.
Motion approved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you for that. Motion passes. Thank you, Karen. You know, just, just a funny thing for you to know, I had a call from someone, I think it, I, I can't remember who it was, but anyway, she told me that, it's somebody I know, and she's on, on a voucher program, and the landlord was attempting to raise the rent, and they called, talked to you guys, and said, uh, we're not paying you more. So I said, yeah, he, he should have been able to look that up to see what the standard was for that property. So, he decided not to do that, so she and her children will be able to stay in their property.
Nice.
Yeah, so that's good. Okay, hey, um, alright, the next one is, I just want to, I want to make one. Um, okay. Consider a resolution authorizing the president to execute a renewal lease agreement between Fort Worth Housing Solutions and Partnership Home, um, which is Tarrant County Homeless Coalition, um, for office and warehouse space at three hundred South Beach Street for twenty-twenty-six.
Um, last one for me, I promise.
You're fine.
Um, as, uh, as I always said, uh, we're looking to, um, extend the lease for Partnership Home, formerly known as Tarrant County, uh, Homeless Coalition. They lease a portion of the office and warehouse space at three hundred South Beach, and they have been there since twenty nineteen. The current lease expires next month, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And they've indicated that they're exploring to move to a larger space, um, that they're not quite ready to do that yet. So we're looking to extend their lease for a year through twenty twenty-six. Um, at the current rates, uh, while they look to see what they're going to do for relocation, um, and this does have a thirty-day cancellation clause if they, if they define that they need somewhere to go. So, um, it is recommended that the board of commissioners authorize the president of Fort Worth Housing Solutions to execute, execute a lease renewal at the same terms, uh, with Partnership Home. Any questions?
But they're looking at moving?
Possibly. They, they might need, they need more space.
I understand.
So they're, they're looking...
So is this a month-to-month?
No, it's a year lease, but it's got a thirty-day termination clause, so they can terminate with thirty days' notice.
Okay.
Do they have to pay us something when they terminate?
Um, I mean, I, I, I don't have a lease primary, but I would say, no.
This is the Homeless Coalition we're talking about.
Okay, so maybe...
And so, um, we try to be a good partner to them. Um, they've actually office with us for, um, gosh, over a decade, um, they were at the administration building with us as well, and recently had just released, um, their NOFO for funding for the next year, and they're going to see significant cuts to the money available for the homeless system, so...
Gotcha.
Trying to be a good partner, we're, we don't want to necessarily, we don't charge the market rate, and we would not ask for any penalty.
Exactly.
Um, they'll give us notice as soon as they find some place, and I imagine it'll be more than thirty days. Um, and we don't have a, an immediate need to refill that space.
I was gonna say, I don't know that, that notice really matters, guys, to be honest, so...
That's what I was thinking about, yeah. And what was I thinking, that maybe they got more money, they could do...
That, that, yeah, they're struggling, so, so we're going to be a good partner.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Move.
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, that motion passes. Thank you. The next one then is to consider a resolution to, um, award and implement, implementation consultant contract for, to ND consulting.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, afternoon.
Good day. Um, so this has to do with our conversion from Emphasis to Yardi. Um, so this impacts a, a large portion of our, our operations as far as software, um, and support. So in August of last year, Fort Worth Housing Solutions entered into an agreement with Averro. Um, their consultant who helped identify, um, and scope out the contract for, um, Yardi. Uh, Yardi was initially selected. Averro stayed on as a consultant to help with implementation and project management. Um, we've since identified an internal project manager who's been, um, carrying a large portion of that project management load, um, and now are in need of, um, bringing in another consultant to continue or finish the project. So we project that the implementation will be finished by July of twenty twenty-six. Um, and so we are recommending, um, that the board approve us entering into a contract with, um, NDC. NDC is currently a subcontractor of Averro, and so they have actually been doing the lion's share of the work and are extremely familiar with the project. Um, so by contracting with them as the new consultant, they've already got sort of a leg up and have been in the process, and will be able to seamlessly, uh, transition and, and wrap everything up. So the not-to-exceed amount of the contract will be five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we do believe that that will get us through to, um, full implementation and post-implementation testing. Any questions?
Any questions?
You, tell us a little bit more about the testing that's being done.
Um, actually, if you have specific questions about testing, Jen Nelson, who's our in-house project manager, is probably the best person to answer those questions.
Okay. So this is the conversion of the core processing system from Emphasis, who's been with for quite a long time, over to Yardi, and so Yardi will not only handle, um, everything from the HCB program and our voucher program that sends the reports into HUD, but also our finance team will use it as the system of record, um, as well as property management. And so we are going to, um, manage to switch all of our portfolio over to Yardi, so we will have real-time information in one database related to our properties. And so, it's quite an undertaking, um, and it was multiple years in the making to decide on Yardi, and then we started the implementation this year, and so NDC, um, has been helping us along this whole implementation process, and then they'll be with us afterwards to ensure that it's set up the right way and we're not having any bugs, and so...
So the testing is progressive, so they already started with some of the financial testing, making sure that, like, little things like ACH transfers work, um, and NDC helps kind of separate us through that process. And then the, the post-go-live testing will happen between July and September of twenty twenty-six.
It's getting it done. I just didn't know, Yardi wasn't the same person that did it all, so that's all.
Yeah, Yardi's the product. They're the, they're the company that's in, that is implementing the solution. The consultant is the person who spends, you know, forty, fifty hours a week helping us to ensure that all the little pieces fall into place like they're supposed to and we stay on, on our schedule.
And these are former Yardi employees, um, that make up that consulting company, so they know the product really well, but they also have done this for other housing authorities, so they understand, you know, from the operations side what we need, so...
Absolutely.
It's a good, um, we, we actually interviewed lots of housing authorities to understand the best way to do a Yardi implementation, and it was highly suggested that we have, um, a consultant come on board to assist, so...
They're essentially an extension of our staff.
Yeah.
Yes, awesome, okay. I spend a lot of time, every convention I go to, I talk to Yardi. Yes, they're all over me, so, you know, I learned a whole lot about, um, Yardi, but that's good. I'm very comfortable from what we do and then from what they tell me, so...
They really are the leader in our industry. It's really, they have the best product for what we do.
Yeah, okay. Alright, anybody else? I wanted to just share, because I, I've been talking to Yardi probably a lot more than you guys have, but wanted to share that, if you had, had her explain that, so you would know how that connection... Any questions or comments?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you for that. Um, next item, to consider a resolution authorizing Fort Worth Housing Solutions to take action necessary to facilitate the sale of that certain improved real property located at five oh one West Rosedale Street in Fort Worth, Texas. Um, Ramble and Rose is the name of this.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
So this, um, individual transaction has, uh, five action items tied to it. Two under Fort Worth Housing Solutions, two under FW Ramble PFC, and one under FWAI. And so what I thought we would do was to talk about in one's full swoop, and then you can do the individual transaction that we go through. And so, Ramble and Rose first came on the, on the radar for us. We, we went into partnership, and we closed the first transaction with them in November, two years ago, just not, November twenty twenty-three. So some details about the property was built in twenty twenty-one. Uh, you just mentioned where it's located. Uh, I probably can help you if you don't know the address. It's right next to, um, a quick trip on, um, on Rosedale, um, there, so, um, it's very easily identifiable. Um, it's a twenty-seven-five units. Um, it's, um, of the twenty-seven-five, two hundred and one are one-bedroom, and seventy-four two-bedroom units. Um, it's, the development style is a five-story podium style. Um, sometimes people might call it a wrap, but, uh, wraparound style. But, um, during the party spaces, um, and currently, right now, today, it's ninety-six percent occupied. Um, the appraised value that we had done on the site, uh, for the acquisition was sixty-seven million, eight hundred thousand. Um, and it's situated on one point seven two acres of land, um, in the zone, uh, NFT five. And the, uh, per unit value is two hundred and forty-seven thousand per unit, that's the approximate value.
That's incredible.
Yes, I, I, it is, it is, uh, but that, that speaks to what the current market is today.
We couldn't build it for less.
Uh, I, if we were, if we were to build it, from the ground up, it would be greater than three hundred thousand per unit. So, uh, sorry to get out of the way, but, uh, that's a good point.
It jumps off the page with me.
So, so we're purchasing the, the property for sixty-four million, um, and that's two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three thousand per unit. Um, the, um, the, 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 the Fort Worth Housing Solution entities in the transaction are FWAI. We've issued a resolution for that. Uh, they're a participation, they're the sole member of the Ramble, sole member of the partnership of Fort Worth Ramble, SMP. Uh, Fort Worth Housing Solutions, a member to the transaction, as the, they own the land, um, and then they're authorizing the acquisition to purchase Ramble. And then in another resolution, we're authorizing Fort Worth Housing Solutions to issue bonds, uh, up to sixty-nine million of, uh, Series twenty twenty-five bonds for the transaction. Uh, the other entity is Fort Worth Ramble PFC, and that's a newly established entity. Um, it is authorized to acquire the property. Um, it's also authorized to issue and sell up to sixty-nine million in twenty twenty-five, uh, bonds. On the project for the building, as it stands right now today, and it will not change... Uh, the project before the building, as it stands right now today, and it will not change, uh, there are, are the twenty and seventy-five units, hundred and thirty-seven of the units are marked. Uh, workforce of eighty percent units are a hundred and three units. And then what we describe as affordable sixty percent units are thirty-five units total. The parties to the transaction are, uh, the most important party is F W Ramble P F C. They issue the bonds. They'll be the owner. Um, our, uh, Housing Solutions Council is Coach Ray, the bond council. They're also the, um, council on the, uh, real estate transaction. A key bank is the underwriter for the transaction. C S G is our financial advisor. Uh, they are fiduciary, that puts their stamp of approval on the transaction. Uh, the trustee is B O K Financial. Uh, all funds are handled through that entity. They come in and out of that entity. And they, they do not come in to Fort Worth Housing Solutions. Uh, the title company is Raticent Title. And, um, again, I, I, um, our most important entity for us is F W Ramble P F C. So that's the new entity, and, uh, we're looking forward to the transaction. Right now today, the proposed, um, acquisition or the proposed closing, uh, for Ramble is scheduled for on around one o'clock P M. I'm very specific on the time, on, on December the eleventh.
Okay.
Uh, so, you know, we've got, we've got a few weeks. So, um, we've been working on this transaction for probably the last four to five months, um, and putting it together. And what you're seeing here is, uh, the culmination of all those pieces coming together, and all the parties agreeing to it. And then this is how we go to, um, to the acquisition. We're all the property outright, one hundred percent.
Who owns it now?
It's owned under partnership, uh, by S two Ramble F W. Fort Worth Housing Solution owns the land.
We're a small partner in the limited partnership.
Okay.
We represent a small piece of, but we own the land. That ownership of the land, um, gets us a tax injunction.
So basically, we're taking out the partner to wholly own it, um, and using our bond rating to do that.
So, so the bond rating is our, uh, is a tool, um, that, um, and all the, all this going, taking place in the real estate market, and the financial markets, and equity markets. Um, this represents, um, uh, the best-case scenario for Fort Worth Housing Solutions. Um, we're not eliminating anybody, but we're taking full ownership. We don't have partners like banks, equity partners, everyone else that touches the property. Um, so what we're buying is not just the property, but the cash flow that comes with it.
In-house?
And Brian, what, um, what term kind of bonds are we doing on this one?
So right now, um, as of this morning, um, you know, rates are, rates are shifting. We're looking at a ten-year bond. Um, and that rate right now is four point one-six percent. Uh, a twelve-year, uh, bond is four point seven-five percent as of this morning. And so, um, that gets us the best rate, which, um, has the best cash flow. And, uh, right now, the best case, we're, we're going to wait, um, till we decide, uh, based on anything, any volatility that, that takes place in the market. Um, we'll make a final determination on next week.
Before the eleventh.
Correct, before the eleventh. Um, and.
One P M.
Thank you.
Going around one P M.
One-ish.
Yeah, I like that. But, um, so, so these, these, uh, it's a good question, um, Mary Margaret. A, a lot of, what, what we did not want to take place for Housing Solutions is that we have these transactions, all of them come due in the same year or in the same window of time. And so what I mean by that is ten years, um, can we refinance them, can we issue more bonds, what do we do? Um, and so we, we, we're looking to stagger that, but balance that risk out with all of them coming to it at one time based on the liquidity and the cash flow that it takes us to do the deal. And so while we're working through this here, um, these third parties that I just described, um, they are, um, weekly updating us on where the market's at, where it's going. It's still, um, and we're making the best, um, recommendations based on not only their, um, recommendations, but also internally, how we manage them internally.
I'm happy with it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion.
Got it. Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. This motion passes. Thank you, Brian. The next item is to consider a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery by F W Ramble Public Facility Corporation um, of its residential development revenue bonds, Ramble and Rose Project, Series twenty-twenty-five. So, we can go forward.
We need to.
We need to do this to make this happen, so.
Okay, I'll move it again.
In second? It's moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. That passes, so we can issue those bonds. Um, okay, and then on K, is that something I need to do?
Yeah, this was the addition that we had to do. So Sadis is going to go over this one, and then if you could pause and go into, uh, the, uh, the next meeting.
All right, thank you, Brian. Okay, the next item is then a consider, to consider a resolution to approve the submission of an inventory removal application, which is, is that section eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the public housing. Oh, units at SCAR sites, I'm sorry. It's in that green, I couldn't see it all.
Good afternoon. Last but not least.
Okay.
Uh, today, I'll be presenting a resolution authorizing the agency to move forward with the disposition of our remaining sixteen public housing units that are located in eight duplexes across the city. We have completed all the required steps leading up to this request, including resident meetings, public postings, and all HUD-related appraisals. Upon approval of this resolution, the agency will submit a section eighteen application to HUD seeking permission to release these eight properties, uh, for sale at fair market value. Throughout this process, we have ensured that the residents are fully supported and not left behind. Uh, we will be issuing housing choice vouchers and working closely with, with each household to secure, uh, sustainable housing. Uh, at one of the most recent resident meetings, we did find out quite a few of our residents want to stay, uh, in our portfolios, so they're already looking at which properties in our portfolio they would like to relocate to. Um, and so with that, I ask for, um, the board's approval to move forward with the disposition of our remaining public housing sites.
Move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. That's the, it's time for us to.
I love that one where they made the motion.
It's time for us to have it.
Bernie was like, I'll do that one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I like the fact that they have a choice.
That's all there is to it.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna, um, go ahead and pause for part of the.
We're gonna pause this, this meeting, and we'll go into, um, affordability.
Yeah, okay. So we're gonna pause. It is now twelve forty-six P M, and we will come back to the meeting after this. But, um, the next meeting will be for Fort Worth, um, Affordability Inc. We'll call this meeting to order at twelve forty-seven P M. First item is approval of minutes from the special meeting on August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
It's been moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. The next item is for Fort Worth, um, A I to execute any and all documents or take any other action that is, um, necessary or desirable to facilitate the sale of that certain improved real estate, real property located at five oh one West Rosedale Street, Fort Worth, Texas, seven six one oh four, and commonly known as Ramble and Rose.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. We will now adjourn this meeting twelve forty-seven P M. Sorry, Brian. Say those steps. I like the way you look. All right, so our next meeting is for Fort Worth Ramble Public Facility Corporation. We're going to call this meeting to order at twelve forty-eight P M. First item is election of officers for the ensuing year. Ooh. Did we, did we set that up?
I know, Michael's not. He's on my course, but if anyone. Yeah, Carlos.
Oh, okay. Can we give him the information?
Yes. This is for the Ramble plan, and this will be for the meeting right after this.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to nominate Terry Adaway as president, Dick Stinson as vice president, and Mary Morgan Lemmons as secretary treasurer of F W Ramble P F C.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. Next item, election, I mean, approval of minutes from the annual meeting on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. Move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. Um, next item is to, a resolution to execute any and all actions and documentation necessary to purchase that certain improved real property located at five oh one West Rosedale Street, Fort Worth, Texas, seven six one oh four, Ramble and Rose.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. The next item is a resolution, uh, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of residential development revenue bonds, Ramble and Rose, Series twenty-twenty-five.
It's been moved.
Second.
Um, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. We will now adjourn this meeting at twelve forty-nine P M. And, let's see, oh, another, okay. Um, Fort Worth. We'll, we'll start the meeting for Fort Worth Public Facility Corporation, P F C, Board of Directors' Annual Meetings. We'll call this meeting to order at twelve forty-nine P M. The first item will be election of president, vice president, and secretary treasurer to serve during the upcoming year on the board's reference above the call to.
What?
Oh, order, okay. Go, go ahead. Yes. I know, and I just called the call, call to order, so, um, again, twelve fifty P M. Um, all right, so go forward.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Terry Adaway as president, Dick Stinson as vice president, and Mary Morgan Lemmons as secretary treasurer of the F W Bond Ranch, Eastwood, Hillside, Ironwood, Matador Ranch, Pin Place, Sedona, and Trinity River P F Cs.
Move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. So the next group, do I need to read all of these? He just did part of them. I'm confused. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, next item is going to be approval of the minutes from these various meetings. First one, the Fort Worth Bonds Ranch, P F C Annual Meeting on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. I'll read all of them. The Eastwood, P F C Annual Meeting on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. The Hillside, P F C Annual Meeting on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. The Ironwood, P F C Special Meeting on August fourteen, twenty-twenty-five. The Matador Ranch, P F C Annual Meeting on October fourteen, twenty-twenty-four. The Pin Place, P F C Annual Meeting on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. The Sedona, P F C Annual Meeting on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. And the Trinity River, P F C Annual Meeting on October seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. Need approval on all of these. Move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. Thank you. The, this meeting is adjourned at twelve fifty-two P M. Um, at this point, we will, um, go back to our meeting, but we are now going into executive session at twelve fifty-two P M, which is closed as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act. Exceptions to the requirement that meetings be open, sections five five one oh seven one to five five one one nine, one zero nine zero as applicable. So now, at this moment, if you don't need to be here for special, um, executive session, you are adjourned. We will reconvene after the executive session, right? Thank you, everybody.